An approved certificate of closing meeting seventeen dash eighteen dash thirteen for the closed session.
So moved.
I can't.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards. Seconded by Ms. Boyd. May have a roll call vote, please.
Is it Miller Richards?
Yes.
Is it Ream?
Yes.
Is it Holm?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Is Kay?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. Next we have approval of the agenda. Do we do we? We do not have a recognition for Optimus Student of the Month because the program runs only from October through May. Final state revenue figures are not yet available, so we need to remove item A B, adoption of the revised FY twenty eighteen, nineteen, school division operating special revenue grant and capital improvement plan budgets. We also need to add an action item nine A, approval of the architectural firm for facility study. So may have a motion to approve the agenda as revised.
So moved.
By Ms. Miller Richards.
I can't.
Seconded by Ms. Boyd. Are there any changes or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, regular school board meeting?
So moved.
I can't.
Moved by Ms. Miller Richards. Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Are there any changes or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Alright, we come to our favorite part of the meeting, recognitions. We will start with the word of the month, reflective, to be presented by Walker Grant. The Walker Grant Center, I'm sorry.
Those are off small.
You're on deck. Good evening, school board members, Dr. Melton and guests. The Walker Grant Early Childhood Center is presenting the word of the month, reflective. The IB definition of reflective says that students can give thoughtful consideration to their own learning and experience. They are able to assess and understand their strengths and limitations in order to support their learning and personal development. Here to present our preschool interpretation of the word reflective is Ms. Jen Fitzhugh, one of our early childhood teachers. We're gonna do the song first. Sorry.
The world is a rainbow that's filled with many colors. Yellow, black, and white, and brown, you see them all around. The world is a rainbow with many kinds of people. It takes all kinds of people to make the world go round. Now you be you, and I'll be me. That's the way we were meant to be. But the world is a mixing cup. Just look what happens when you stir it up. The world is a rainbow with many kinds of people. And when we work together, it's such a sight to see. The world is beautiful when we live in harmony.
The rainbow fish is the most beautiful fish in the ocean and is asked to share one of his shining scales with a little blue fish, and he refuses. All the other fish in the sea leave him alone, and he wondered why. He goes to the wise octopus for advice, and she tells him to give away his scales. Rainbow fish reluctantly does so, except for one. In the end, he is less beautiful than he was before, but he has new friends and is now the happiest fish in the sea. So as we reflect and thoughtfully consider the moral of the story, we want to share a shiny scale with all of you, so that everyone could feel beautiful.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, you guys did great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, we would like to recognize our vice chair, Barbara Miller Richards, who will be completing her twenty-year tenure on the school board at the end of this month. So on behalf of the whole school board, I would like to acknowledge twenty years of service that Barbara Miller Richards has given to city schools by serving on the school board. She has seen the coming and going of three superintendents and ten board members. She's been on the board during the building of Lafayette and JM, the renovation of the Walker Grant Center, and Hugh Mercer.
I'm not that old.
She's been a mentor to many of us on the board and is the voice of reason that the board will miss. Good luck in your future endeavors, and thank you for all your service to the children of Fredericksburg.
Thank you, it's been an honor and a pleasure.
I'm happy.
You're gonna sit here the rest of the meeting?
My car is right out.
Oh, that's fine.
Thank you all. No, I said it's been an honor and a pleasure.
Board Chairman Ream, board members, Dr. Melton, families and friends, it's my pleasure to recognize our PTA president, Kristy Bretzinger. We have a wonderfully supportive PTA who work incredibly hard for the good of the children of Hugh Mercer. Many of them were there today at Field Day, Sunburns and all. Tonight, I would like to recognize this year's president, who has led the group to many great successes, of which I'd like to name a few. Probably the one they are most proud of is making our kindergarten playground nearly ADA compliant, so all children have access to most of the equipment. We now have the safe pathway with ramps, two ADA swings, and the new green spinner. PTA has added two beautiful planters to the front of the school, making it much more welcoming to visitors. They sponsor the holiday shop in December, so every child has the opportunity to shop for their families. No one is left out. They are generous with staff and provided Freddy's ice cream for staff and pumpkin pies at Thanksgiving. They regularly make donations of clothing to our nurses clinic. For Teacher Appreciation Week, they include all staff, teachers, office, cafeteria, bus drivers, nurses, even principals. They attend all special events, and were here for the IB PYP Parent Information Session two weeks ago. They have helped honor our Teacher of the Year. They have led us in participating in the statewide Reflections Program, which recognizes talent in the arts. Our PTA president, Mrs. Kristy Bretzinger, has three children at Hugh Mercer and a fourth coming in two years. She emphasized she didn't want this to be presented as something she did by herself, that it was a team effort. But we all know that it takes a good leader to make good things happen. Please join me in honoring our PTA president, Kristy Bretzinger. Now, I'd like to introduce Matt Terry, principal of Lafayette Upper Elementary School.
Good evening. Looking around to see if Mrs. Ledoux is here tonight, but we are here to recognize Mrs. Elizabeth Ledoux, who is our PTA president at Lafayette. And Mrs. Ledoux has a fourth grader at Lafayette this year, and her name is Josephine, we call her Josie. And she has done some amazing things for us this year. She actually came onto the board when we finally got our new playground, which was fantastic, and we love it. But one of the things that Ms. Ledoux said early on, when she was the PTA president, was she said to the staff and to all the parents who came, she said, "My mission here and our vision is to create an army of volunteers to support our scholars and our teachers and our staff." And I just love that, and that's exactly what she did this year. She did a wonderful job creating that for us. And she did things like support our Watch Dogs Dads Program, which we love. She implemented grade level dances this year, so all of our children got dances this year. Our Super Lions Program is a great program. Our Parents versus Teachers Kickball Game, if you haven't seen that, it is so much fun. We had a blast. Spirit Nights and our Girl Smarts Program, which has been wonderful for our girls. And she even brought in our guest speakers. Mrs. Bridey came to speak, and even our school board members were able to come out and join us. So we want to thank and recognize tonight, Mrs. Ledoux. Now, I'd like to bring up Dr. Wyatt from Walker Grant.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize a great team of PTA officers from Walker Grant. They operate as a team. So we do have three members with us, actually, two members with us tonight. Mrs. Christian Snead could not be here tonight with us. But we do have Dr. Elizabeth Lewis and Mrs. Jen Kabza. I'm gonna have them come up together, because they're such a team effort. Come on up, ladies. They did a fabulous job of making sure that we each quarter recognized a Teacher of the Quarter and a Paraprofessional of the Quarter. They also had a teacher supply closet, because much like our students, our teachers also love all of those little extra supplies and special treats. And they make sure that they recognize each of our staff members as well. They've gone out of their way, and I'd really like to support them. I'm gonna miss them as they depart with their children. But I also wanted to do something very special, to let you know that this team comes together no matter what I ask for, and they're there. Some of them are there more often than others. I see her every day, so I'm grateful. And Mrs. Jen Kabza has actually been a PTA officer for Fredericksburg City Public Schools for twelve consecutive years. So I wanted to make sure I recognize that. So ladies, thank you very much. And now, Dr. Rochelle from James Monroe High School.
Good evening, all. The James Monroe Booster Club has provided great support for our faculty, staff, and students this year. Our Booster Club President bleeds black and orange. She was our loudest cheerleader during our recent Division-Wide Basketball Tournament. In fact, I think she was the self-proclaimed assistant coach. Please help me in welcoming our Booster President, Mrs. Donna Smith.
Thank you.
Good evening. It's my honor to recognize the winner of the two thousand eighteen Bus Rodeo Champion this year. On Saturday, April twenty-eighth, approximately fourteen of our bus drivers participated in the Bus Rodeo. I'm not sure if you've witnessed that they're driving through cones, parallel parking. They had to follow all the rules, signal light on, horn blown, tobacco up. They're scored on each of those activities. But this year was the second rodeo I've been available to see, and it is, it is, it is, it blows my mind because of the talent our drivers have. This year's winner, and I believe this is his first year with us, is John Mesomele. I apologize if I mispronounce your last name. You can come on up. He will be participating in Roanoke. I don't have the date at this time, but he will be participating in the state competition, so let's wish him well. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, once again. Since two thousand thirteen, Hugh Mercer students and parents have participated in the St. Jude Children's Research Hospital Math-athon, led by our very own Mrs. Kathy Weller, a kindergarten teacher and math lead teacher. The St. Jude Children's Hospital treats children battling cancer and other deadly diseases from all over the world, including the Fredericksburg area. Families never receive a bill from St. Jude for treatment, travel, housing, or food. Hugh Mercer's donation for this year was able to provide five days of oxygen for a St. Jude patient. Students complete math problems and ask friends and family to sponsor them. The Math-athon has been a huge success at Hugh Mercer. Since two thousand nine, Hugh Mercer has raised over forty-one thousand dollars for the hospital. Classes that have raised the most money this year were Ms. Montgomery in kindergarten, Ms. Elin in first grade, and Ms. Memmer in second grade. This event culminated our Math Month in April, which is always seen as a fun time by our students. Please join me in applauding the great work and leadership in this cause by Kathy Weller.
Good evening, again. It's my pleasure this evening to recognize our Word Master Challenge winners. Each year, our gifted intellectual scholars participate in Word Masters, a national language arts competition consisting of three meets each year. The following students are under the direction of Mrs. Susan Inga Breton, and these students excelled in their respective grade levels. So please help me congratulate our sixth grade winner, Margaret Lacy, daughter of Edgar Lacy and Robin Lacy. Our seventh grade winner is Annabelle McFarland, daughter of Thompson McFarland and Kit McFarland. And our eighth grade winner is Gray Muldro, son of Chris Muldro and Tamara Muldro. He doesn't appear to be with us tonight, so. And now, we'll welcome back Dr. Rochelle from James Monroe.
Good evening, once again. The JM DECA Chapter sent twenty-three students to the international competition in Atlanta, Georgia this year. This was a record number of qualifying participants for us. Finishing in the top ten in full-service restaurant marketing competition was Gina Elkin, daughter of Mr. Paul Elkin and Mrs. Carla Elkin. I didn't see Gina tonight, but let's award her with our applause. Next, for spring sports. The girls' track and field team was Region Three runner-ups, and the following student athletes were crowned regional champions in their respective events, earning the right to compete at the VHSL State Division Three Track Meet, held on June second and third. And I will say that both girls and boys, despite inclement weather and numerous delays, represented James Monroe and the city of Fredericksburg in a phenomenal way and yielded great results. First, we have Jenny Behringer, Region Three B, four-hundred-meter champion, daughter of Mr. Charles Behringer and Mrs. Jessica Behringer. Jenny also is the VHSL State Champion in the eight-hundred meter. Woo-hoo! Congratulations. Alexis Clark, daughter of Mr. Stacy Clark and Ms. Tammy Clark. Alexis is the Region Three B shot put and discus champion. Alexis is also the VHSL State Champion for the shot put and discus this year. Woo-hoo! Congratulations. The four-by-one-hundred team was the regional champion. The members of the team are Tasha Batiste, daughter of Mr. Charles Batiste Senior and Mrs. Melissa Batiste. Is Tasha here? Let's award her with our applause. Sanai Jones, daughter of Mr. Gilbert Jones Junior and Ms. Rakita Jones. Not here. Zoe Tierney, daughter of Mr. Chris Tierney and Ms. Jamie Tierney. I didn't see Zoe. Okay. This young lady is here. Kennedy Green, daughter of Mr. Steven Green and Ms. Ashley Catlett. Congratulations. The boys' track team fared well at the regional meet and finished in fifth place. Regional champions for the boys are as follows. Will Snead, sixteen-hundred meters, son of Mr. George Snead and Mrs. Kirsten Snead. Mitch Dolby, thirty-two-hundred meters, son of Mr. Andrew Dolby and Mrs. Michelle Dolby. The four-by-one-hundred team, whose members are Deontay Curry, son of Ms. Tammy Hayden. I didn't see you over there, Deontay. Congratulations. Christian Walker, son of Ms. Stephanie Walker Smith. A.J. Johnson, son of Mr. Kenneth Johnson and Mrs. Betsy Johnson. Congratulations. Peter Haynes, son of Mr. Peter Haynes and Mrs. Christine Haynes. Congratulations. Both the boys' and girls' tennis teams are Battlefield District and Region Three B champions this year. Both teams will compete in the state semifinals tomorrow afternoon at the University of Mary Washington. The boys' team captains are Marshall Wood, son of Mr. Ken Wood and Mrs. Rice Wood. Levi Hoffman, son of Mr. Daniel Hoffman and Mrs. Cynthia Hoffman. Congratulations. Noah Adams, son of Mr. Michael Adams and Mrs. Elizabeth Adams. Congratulations. Cooper Sims, son of Mr. Shane Sims and Mrs. Janey Sims. Congratulations. Cooper Sims, son of Mr. Shane Sims and Mrs. Janey Sims. Congratulations. And good luck tomorrow. The girls' team captain is Grace Hall, daughter of Mr. Chris Hall and Mrs. Rebecca Hall. We wish both teams luck tomorrow. Boys' soccer, the boys' soccer team won the Region Three B Championship on June first and will advance to the VHSL Division Three Tournament tomorrow night at Maury Stadium. Team captains are Ryland Keeler, son of Mr. Eric Keeler and Mrs. Carrie McKeeler, Keeler, McGellar Keeler. Sorry. Congratulations. Killian Haney, son of Ms. Nicole Stewart. Congratulations. And Richard Dennis, son of Ms. Camelia Dennis. And Yon Dennis. Congratulations, and good luck tomorrow night. Thank you.
Alright. Thank you all for coming. Anyone is welcome to stay if they'd like to. We'll take a quick. Everyone's gone. And I will say that both girls and boys, despite inclement weather and numerous delays, represented James Monroe and the city of Fredericksburg in a phenomenal way and yielded great results. First, we have Jenny Behringer, Region 3B 400-meter champion, daughter of Mr. Charles Behringer and Mrs. Jessica Behringer. Jenny also is the VHSL State Champion in the 800-meter. Congratulations. Alexis Clark, daughter of Mr. Stacy Clark and Ms. Tammy Clark. Alexis is the Region 3B shot put and discus champion. Alexis is also the VHSL State Champion for the shot put and discus this year. Congratulations. The 4x100 team was the regional champion. The members of the team are Tasha Batiste, daughter of Mr. Charles Batiste Sr. and Mrs. Melissa Batiste. Is Tasha here? Let's award her with our applause. Sanai Jones, daughter of Mr. Gilbert Jones Jr. and Ms. Rakita Jones. Not here. Zoe Tierney, daughter of Mr. Chris Tierney and Ms. Jamie Tierney. I didn't see Zoe. Okay. This young lady is here. Kennedy Green, daughter of Mr. Stephen Green and Ms. Ashley Catlett. Congratulations. The boys' track team fared well at the regional meet and finished in fifth place. Regional champions for the boys are as follows. Will Sneed, 1,600 meters, son of Mr. George Sneed and Mrs. Kirsten Sneed. Mitch Dolby, 3,200 meters, son of Mr. Andrew Dolby and Mrs. Michelle Dolby. The 4x100 team, whose members are Deontay Curry, son of Ms. Tammy Hayden. I didn't see you over there, Deontay. Congratulations. Christian Walker, son of Ms. Stephanie Walker Smith. A.J. Johnson, son of Mr. Kenneth Johnson and Mrs. Betsy Johnson. Congratulations. Peter Haynes, son of Mr. Peter Haynes and Mrs. Christine Haynes. Congratulations. Both the boys' and girls' tennis teams are Battlefield District and Region 3B champions this year. Both teams will compete in the state semifinals tomorrow afternoon at the University of Mary Washington. The boys' team captains are Marshall Wood, son of Mr. Ken Wood and Mrs. Rice Wood. Levi Hoffman, son of Mr. Daniel Hoffman and Mrs. Cynthia Hoffman. Congratulations. Noah Adams, son of Mr. Michael Adams and Mrs. Elizabeth Adams. Congratulations. Cooper Sims, son of Mr. Shane Sims and Mrs. Janie Sims. Congratulations and good luck tomorrow. The girls' team captain is Grace Hall, daughter of Mr. Chris Hall and Mrs. Rebecca Hall. We wish both teams luck tomorrow. Boys' soccer. The boys' soccer team won the Region 3B championship on June 1st and will advance to the VHSL Division III tournament tomorrow night at Maury Stadium. Team captains are Ryland Keeler, son of Mr. Eric Keeler and Mrs. Carrie McKeeler- Keeler- McGeller Keeler. Sorry. Congratulations. Killian Haney, son of Ms. Nicole Stewart. Congratulations. And Richard Dennis, son of Ms. Camelia Dennis.
And Yon Dennis.
Congratulations and good luck tomorrow night. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for coming. Anyone is welcome to stay if they'd like to. We'll take a quick. Everyone's gone. All right, next on our agenda is the hearing of citizens. Are there any citizens wishing to address the board? Hearing none? What? Oh, sorry. Next we come to the consent agenda.
I would recommend that the board approve the consent agenda as presented with the following items, head start approvals in the administration of federal programs.
So moved.
Second.
By Ms. Mill Richards, seconded by Ms. Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next we come to person- action items.
Recommend the board approve.
Personnel schedule.
Recommend the board approve personnel schedules, including the addendum information shown as of June 4, 2018.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
By Ms. Mill Richards, seconded by Ms. Boyd. Any discussion? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mrs. Ream?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Ms. Boyd?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that at this point, final figures are not available from the state on the operating budget. We should be hearing those shortly. We will bring amended budget to view at the July 2nd meeting. I also like to recommend that the board approve the meal price changes to 2018-19 school year as provided on the attached chart. The only increase at this time will be to raise lunch price at James Monroe by five cents to $2.95. There will not be any à la carte or adult meal price changes at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Mill Richards, seconded by Ms. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
No.
Oh. Malvina said nay? Okay. The motion carries unanimously. The next. If we have a minute. I mean, it's just nice to note that the only reason that it's changing only at JM is because all of our other schools have free breakfast and lunch. So I think that that's worth noting. Good point. All right.
The additional action item, as a result of our discussions with members of City Council in regard to capital improvements, specifically need for new schools or additions to schools, I recommend that the board approve the selection of mostly architects to conduct a facility study for Fredericksburg City Public Schools.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Mill Richards, seconded by Ms. Boyd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries unanimously.
And this, just to summarize, Dr. Melton, is the study is to determine our facility.
The study will determine, based on growth, enrollment figures, projected enrollment, where the most pressing needs in the school division are. We already know that at some point, James Monroe will have to be, they will have to add additional classroom space to James Monroe. We also know that at some point in our future, based on previous studies, that the school division will have to build a new elementary school or a new school. City Council has included money in their capital budget a few years out. I can't remember which year to add classroom space to Walker Grant. The purpose of the study is to look at the feasibility of those things, plus identify adequate pieces of property in the city, along with work with help from the city staff, if a new school, if and when a new school is built.
What happened again to the property?
In Idlewild?
No. Okay. The deal that we struck with City Council when we gave them the property for the police station? Are we still researching that? I just remember we-
We have researched it. No action was ever taken on the part of the city, nor was any action taken on the part of the school board. It appears to us that it was an agreement between, but we have not been able to find anything in writing regarding that 27 acres of property in Idlewild.
Okay, so do you know which year that was and which board members were elected at the time?
We do know which year it was. Ms. Wright was able to pull up board actions on the property where the police station was built, but I don't, 2003?
I'm thinking 2003, 2004, in that range.
Yeah. I mean, we can get that information.
I mean, you just don't give away property. I mean, we just didn't give it away. So I just, I just think it's worth a conversation with the people who were elected at that time. So you're saying it's 2003 and 2004?
Yes.
Okay.
It was about that time.
I know. It was you, me, Pat.
Janice.
Janice.
I can't remember if Carrie was Bennett, Mr. Bennett on?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's worth a conversation because it was an agreement. The school board would never have allowed property to be taken like that without getting something. I mean, we had, but it just doesn't make sense that nothing was documented. So I'd just like to have a conversation with those people who were at the table at the time.
Some of it was in closed session because it was property?
Yeah, that's, I'm sure, but-
We met with the police chief at the time. His name, I can't remember.
Okay. All right. But it's worth a conversation since we're doing this study and we need the property to build facilities.
Next, we have the instructional presentation, Effective Schools Update, Walker Grant Middle School and James Monroe High School. Ms. Walsh?
Good evening. Tonight's instructional presentation is on the effective schools, and we will be hearing an update for our secondary schools, starting with Dr. Melanie K. Wyatt.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to begin this evening to show you some highlights from our effective schools process, and bear with me as I learn to operate this new remote. Of course, each year, when we're taking on new projects, we look at the reflective process of studying, reflecting, planning, and doing an action on what each corolite has set as their goal for the school year. This is just a page of all of our amazing corolite leaders who give of their time and some of the projects that they've worked on. And I'm going to highlight just a few. No worries, I'm not going to go through all of those. But I do want you to know that they each take on their own goal for each year. Our time on task corolite, each year, they work on two different projects. Of course, we have our STEAM night, and as you know, we added art into our STEAM night. Each year, it becomes so big that we're losing count. When we get to 600, it's really hard to focus on the count with that, with some folks coming and going. So we stopped at 600, but we know there was more. We had over 45 stations, and we continue each year to make sure that we increase the number of our STEAM ambassadors. And their second goal and project this year was a career fair, and that is tomorrow night. So if you're interested, please come out and join us. We have a few interesting stations that are virtual careers, so it might be interesting for you to come out and take a look at it. I'm excited to see. There's a few surprises in there, and that's 6 o'clock tomorrow evening. The instructional leadership group. As you know, Walker Grant has been working on some components of PBIS for several years. I brought you the Student Support Program, as well as some other initiatives. So we were very excited when the school division decided to take this on as a division-wide initiative. So this year, the team worked with our PBIS team as well to come up with a few things. They did some school visits. We expanded our matrices. And we also did a number of videos. So any new student or parent or anyone in the community, beginning in July, will be able to see three new videos of what our school looks like and how we've taken on PBIS. I think the students love to be actors in that, so you might see some familiar fun faces who presented here at the school board. So we will send those links to you. They're very long to send and to do in this project, but they will be short, and they will be shown at orientation, as well as various other parent evenings. There are also lesson plans to go with each video. And of course, I know you've, if you haven't heard the crazy news that's going on at Walker Grant, we are doing cones as restroom passes. And let me show you what that means. They are large cones. They are about 12 inches tall, and each area of the building is color-coded. So it cuts down on them making a long journey to go to the restroom or get water, or visit a friend or wave at a friend. It's really, we weren't sure if it was going to work, and it's actually been amazing. And teachers said, let's just try it. And I said, okay, let's go for it. So what happens is they have a cone. It's color-coded, as you can see by the map, of first and second floor, and students know exactly which restroom to go to. It's cut down on classroom disruptions. It's preserved instruction time. And one of the most important things is that if there's an emergency in the building and we do a lockdown, we know exactly which students are in the hallway and who to look for. So it's been funny to watch, actually, the students go, and they make sure they take the time to fit the cone in the little square. We weren't sure how that was going to work. The Adventine was standing there watching them, and they lined them up, and we're like, just go to the restroom! But they love it. It's been great. Teachers love it, so we're very proud of this initiative. So Positive Homeschool Relations, of course. They've worked on school culture and climate. And so they had an idea of doing a holiday parade bus. And I think Dr. Russ will be excited once all the glitter and tape is probably off of that school bus. But there was glitter and things everywhere, but they had a great time. Students came out, parents came out, and we did highlight our NYPD program. One of my favorite events is where the entire BLT, all corolites come together to support our annual World Showcase Night. It was the second one. Our numbers have increased. We have a number of performances, stations, and vendors. The community comes, and they just pour out their love for us. We have so many food donations from restaurant families come in, and we open this up to 5th graders. And they get another chance to come into our school and meet our world language teachers and learn a little bit about culture and the language. So we do have those stations. So it helps them, and we do this right before scheduling. So they get a taste of French and Latin and Spanish, and it's been pretty exciting. And of course, my favorite is the food. And our last highlight for the evening, the entire BLT also came together to support our IB process. With the IB process, we had what was called an inquiry time. It's about an hour and 20 minutes, once a month, where grade levels split out. Our 8th grade students got to work on their community service project with their supervisors. 6th grade students worked with teachers on the, just, these are just a few of the topics. There were a number of them. But 6th graders had a chance to talk about advice for incoming 6th graders, so they have brochures. They worked on materials management, study strategies, and goal setting. Our 7th grade students worked on learning styles, team building, and citing sources using our suicide prevention resources. So we were able to hit a number of topics there. There are also videos that we will share with scholars and parents also for both of these evenings. And if you weren't able to come out, our Community Project Showcase Night was fabulous. The community came, parents came, grandparents came. We had over 140 projects. Students could work as individual projects as 8th graders or in group projects. And we also had a few presentations from the projects from James Monroe. So we will have a video that we will send you to link, so you can see how that evening went as well. And now it is my pleasure to turn it over to Dr. Rochelle.
Okay. I too have here the list of our corolites and their respective chairs. We are very proud of the work that our corolites have done this year. Some of the work focused on restorative circles. As you can see, cross-curricular collaboration, discipline and interventions, diversity training, and staff cohesiveness, to name a few of the overarching themes for the year. Now, I'm not sure why that one didn't. Can we go back, Mike? Why that one didn't show? Maybe we can go to view slide? It's not showing there either? I'll just talk our way through it. But you can see the main thing, which is the trophy. I can talk our way through that one. That one is the Positive Homeschool Relations Corolite. And as you know, that was a division-wide initiative, but our Homeschool Relations Corolites from each building were tasked with running that. And our corolite successfully held two community basketball games that included James Monroe, Hugh Mercer, and Walker Grant. And so we had over 300 attendees to a total of two games there from Fredericksburg City Schools and the community that supported the initiative. And funds were raised and divided amongst the school boosters and PTA. And it's important to note that JM won the championship. And so if you were not available to attend the game, the trophy, as you can see there, is still on our school front counter for you, for your viewing pleasure. So please stop by and see. Photo ops are still available. And I apologize that that slide did not come through. All right. This one, it seems to be working appropriately. So the next corolite that I'd like to highlight is the Instructional Leadership. And I'm very, very proud of the forward thinking that was demonstrated by this corolite this year. One of the projects that I'd like to highlight here is the collaborative cross-curricular idea that they had. They, you know, at the high school level, we don't have common planning. And so one of the tenets of IB is that cross-curricular piece, is that idea of co-planning and so forth. And so they organized and facilitated this initiative to encourage collaborative planning. And so it resulted in more than 25 collaborations throughout the building. That included a project with a carpentry class and an English class that resulted in a puppet theater being built. It also ended with a, we had a collaboration between a French class, a sports marketing, and a 3D printing class. And that's highlighted by a picture there with a 3D printing being held up by one of our students. This corolite also, through the help of our IT department, developed a school-wide interactive master calendar. One of the pieces of feedback that we've received this year from staff is, hey, you know, we're also involved, ultra-involved in the things that happen at the school, and we don't mind that, but things are starting to overlap. We don't know where we're supposed to be and when, you know. And, you know, we have this meeting, and then someone's calling for a faculty meeting, or someone's calling for a department meeting, and then I have this club meeting, and they're just overlapping. And so we have no way of keeping track of it all. And so this corolite took the initiative based off of reflecting on that feedback, which is part of the effective schools process, to develop this master calendar. And so over the last, I would say, month and a half, the corolite leaders have played with this as a pilot. And we will, we will send it out to all teachers at the start of the year with some of those non-negotiable dates kind of already filled in for full implementation. And it's my hope that that will kind of help bring more cohesiveness and understanding to what we're doing, what's going on in the building, and will help for planning. So I'm very proud, like I said, of the initiative shown by this corolite. Next, with respect to frequent monitoring of student progress, we have this corolite monitoring trend data on student discipline and attendance, as well as the use of tutor.com. Now, with respect to student discipline and attendance, their efforts here have been used to develop, or to begin to develop, creative positive interventions that are appropriate for the high school level, based off of feedback and reflective study, if you will. We've been trying to alter and adjust our approaches to school-wide discipline. And, but we have to do that based on what the data show. And so this corolite has been tasked with that study. Also, with reflect to monitoring tutor.com. This was new for us this year, and so we needed some folks to kind of monitor the use of tutor.com to see if it's worth the money, should we continue to provide it for our students. I think it's worth the money. It's year one. I think it's worth the money, it's year one. This program is awesome because we get monthly reports, we even get reports if we find, or if tutor.com feels that a student is overusing the resource. They will send us a report of the transcript between the tutor and the student, and we can forward that on to the classroom teacher. For example, during the month of May, over 56% of the students use the drop-off essay component of tutor.com, so that they could have their essays reviewed prior to turning them in to their classroom teacher. So, they could have their essays proofread or edited by the tutor before they turn, submitted them in for a classroom grade. That's a phenomenal service. And so, this correlate next year will be tasked with getting the word out more, so that more and more students will take advantage of this resource.
Are you going to have questions at the end, or do you want?
You want to ask, is it about this?
It is, I just want, like, what, what things are covered by tutor.com?
All subjects.
All subjects. Any subject at JM is tutored by tutor.com.
I mean, I would say African-American literature is probably not on tutor.com, but, yeah.
I know, right?
Calculus, physics, forensic science is probably not, you know, some of our outlier courses, are you, are single courses or not, but all of our languages are, AP courses are-
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's amazing.
Yeah, I've never heard of it, I didn't know we had it.
All students received information on it via their school email address, and it's been phenomenal for us.
We started it this year?
We started it this year. It was our way of providing additional support for students. Remember, remember, whenever we stopped having JMM, we needed to offer something else on the flip side, and so, this is what we offered.
That's great.
And so, in each of the examples shared by both Dr. Wyatt and myself, I hope that you can see, we've demonstrated how our correlates, our schools, have taken the time to study, reflect, plan, and do, and use the effective schools process accordingly. Thank you so much.
I have another question that goes back to something else, sorry.
For me?
Well, I'm really not, sorry. Yes, for you. But, when you were talking about the master calendar, not that all of those things would need to be on the website calendar, but is there a way to then make sure that the, the pertinent things are on that division calendar so that you can look and see exactly what's happening when?
The purpose of the master calendar is more so for in-house building meetings such as faculty meeting, right? Which would not be a division, you know what I mean?
Right.
Department head meeting, correlate meetings.
Right.
Those type of internal meetings. Not things that the public would attend necessarily. So, that's, that's the difference. Now, we will put on there, the third layer, there, it's actually like three calendars in one. It's, and it's color-coded, so it's, you know, my non-negotiable, all-staff meeting calendar, and then it's the kind of departmental lead-type calendar, and then student-based calendar, so like club meetings and stuff like that. So, there, those will all be layered on top of one another in this master calendar. And so, all of the teachers will have viewing rights, but only correlate leads and department heads and admin, for the time being, will have editing rights.
It might be nice in the future to look at, you know, I mean, once it gets established, being able to have a capability to filter it, you know, down to what would, you would want to put on the, the division-wide calendar, you know, on the public site, just to make sure that we get all of those. Because I have a feeling there's going to be things that show up on your calendar, you know, combined calendar, that we're not capturing right now.
We will certainly still maintain the information that we put on the division calendar, will still be put on the division calendar. There's not going to be any change there.
Right.
This, this calendar is internal based on feedback from my staff on what they were needing.
Yeah, I understand, I understand.
So, no changes with respect to what we, what we put on the division calendar.
You put IEP meetings?
No. They have their own IEP calendar. Right.
The only reason I ask that is because teachers are always-
I mean, there may be, if we, if we did that, of course, there would be no names, but it might just be kind of a placeholder to say, "Hey, we're, we're holding IEP meetings."
Right. The only reason I ask that is because teachers keep, sometimes they get moved around and, and the teachers who are participating in them don't know where they're supposed to be, or that it's happened, or that, you know, that was, that was a calendar issue. That's all I just asked.
That's good, that's a good point. I can let our correlate know.
And with your tutor.com, I've had some experience with them, and that trend of usage or non-usage is something that happens with other schools who use tutor.com. Parents don't know about it, students don't use it, it is a phenomenal resource.
It is.
And so, you have to be a little bit aggressive in marketing and advertising.
Right.
Because you're going to find, I mean, the, the usage just isn't there, and you come to a meeting like this and share it, and everybody's like, "Wow, we didn't know this existed," but it's been there all the time.
Right.
And usage just isn't there.
Right. When administrators meet with students, we talk about it, I have emails from students after they, I've talked to them about it, they email me back and say, I just, one example is, "I just spent two hours with the math tutor on tutor.com, I'm pumped, I'm ready to go for my quiz." So, you're right, it, it takes an intentional effort and focus, and so, with the help of this correlate and a united effort from the teachers, I'm hopeful that more and more students will start to access it.
Maybe we can put it in the newsletter?
Or, on the website, as an announcement for next year.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely. Like I said, this year was the first year with it, and we will continue to use it.
Good.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. The next information item is the monthly financial report.
Mr. Baker's not here, the board has been provided with financial report through April 30. If any of you have questions, please feel free to contact Mr. Baker.
All right. So, the next information item is the employee incentive awards selection committee.
Well, we will need a volunteer from the board to serve on the selection committee for the employee incentive awards.
If Barbara does it, do you get the stamp?
Got to do it by June 30.
I don't mind doing it.
Okay. Just ring.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, then we come to old business. I'd like to remind the board that we'll hold our organizational meeting on Monday, July 2nd, 2018. And that is an early meeting, correct?
No, that's the regular time.
That's the regular time, okay. Sorry. And then the VSBA orientation for new board members and superintendents will be held on July 16th in Richmond. We'll have a new school board member, Katie Palmeroy, as of July 1st. She will be attending the orientation. If anyone else wishes to attend, please let Ms. Wright know as soon as possible. And the VSBA conference on education will be held in Richmond, July 17th. Anyone know as of now?
I'm going to that one.
Anybody else?
I think Katie is going to go. Mrs. Palmeroy?
I'm contemplating. Need to see if I can get her. All right, so please let Ms. Wright know as soon as possible if you'd like to attend. And then we have board member, we'd need a volunteer from the board to present the word of the month for July and August.
Madam Chair. I'd like to recommend that we share this word of the month during the summer month with the administrative team, and have them select one of the months, and we do one of the months.
Sure, I'll assign somebody.
All right. So, would you like July?
They will be voluntold.
Voluntold. They're different, we don't have patriotism anymore.
Why don't we do-
No, I did kindness, or-
One of the two, Ms. Wright, one on patriotism.
Yes, that's the one I did last year.
Now, they're-
We'll do patriotism, staff will do patriotism.
It's not anymore.
I thought we switched them.
Because we're, they're IB ones.
I thought we still did patriotism as one.
I think-
I know there was-
No, there's 10 IB profiles, so-
There are 10 IB profiles and two others.
Okay, so we have patriotism in July?
For staff.
For staff?
July, sure.
Yeah.
And then, August was kindness, Janice did it last year? Is that right?
Sure, you did patriotism.
I did patriotism.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Okay, you all have a tough act to follow with that patriotism, I remember that one.
I have a whole staff to put it behind.
Wow.
I think-
There's more than a staff to beat me.
Challenge has been-
Well, the challenge is getting better than the students that come for us.
Yeah, right.
They are phenomenal, yes.
So, who's doing August then?
Who's volunteering?
Pretty sure I did it last year.
You did it last year.
You can do it last year. Yeah, no, I'm good.
Oh, you're good. I've done patience recently. That was, used to be one.
Oh, I used to get-
I'll do it, I'll do it, whatever, whatever we decide, what, are we doing kindness again? Oh, because I have, I, it's fine, I'll do it.
You're good at kindness.
I have another thing about kindness.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
You're on.
Good.
It's actually like kindness into equity.
All right.
I just read an article. I'm ready. All right. Next, word of the order.
Three minutes.
Dude, it's, I'm, you don't have to talk to me about brevity.
For the good of the order, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Wyatt for your 22 years with the city of Fredericksburg. Yay! It's a real loss to us. You've done a terrific job at Walker Grant, followed by another, or preceded by another terrific principal. And it has been an honor and a pleasure.
Both of you?
Yes, so tomorrow night, if you are not going to career night at Walker Grant, which sounds pretty amazing, there's also, the soccer team is playing for their first, the state's quarterfinals at Maury at 6:00 against York. Also, we, we won't be back until after graduation, so congratulations to all the graduates, and thank you to everybody who helped get them there from head start on. And thank you, Barbara.
So, can I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Miller Richards. Seconded by Ms. Boyd, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the meeting is adjourned at 8:34.
Ooh, that's early, even for us.